Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God and with his will, with liberty and justice for all men.
Just a brief announcement about open podium that we just have started back with last couple of months. I want to say post-COVID. I guess we're just barely into post-COVID now, if you can even define it as such. But at any rate, open podium. It's an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Prior to each council meeting, typically council meetings are held the first and third Tuesday of each month. This open podium occurs from six thirty to six fifty-five here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at nine five two nine four nine eight four one two by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. So we have something called the HRA, of course, across the state of Minnesota, but the HRA is the Housing Redevelopment Authority, and in some cities it's a separate entity. In our city, we are permitted to have it as the city council. So we actually have an HRA meeting now embedded within the city council meeting. It's brief. So I call the HRA meeting to order. Roll call. Where are we? Katie, you changed. Now, I know that Nicole's been there, but I'm not.
Councilmember Freyberg.
Here.
Councilmember Norrion.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Toomey.
Here.
Mayor Case.
Here. So the first order of business are the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the HRA minutes from our last HRA meeting held back on December seventh, two thousand twenty-one?
Move to approve the HRA minutes from December seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything you'd like to correct, edit, tweak? Ask questions about? All those in favor of accepting them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Mr. Getcho, the reason for the HRA meeting this evening?
Yes, thank you, members of the HRA. You may remember at the last council meeting, you held a public hearing to consider providing tax increment financing for the LE apartment project. And that's actually also later on the agenda for second reading because you recall you already provided preliminary approval for the LE project, the apartment complex. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, that this four-story mixed-income apartment project meets a criteria for a housing TIF district. Twenty percent of the units, that would be forty-eight of the two hundred and thirty-nine units, will be affordable to residents earning at or below fifty percent of the AMI, and that is what the TIF funding provides for, that affordability. In addition, with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, there will be an additional twelve units that'll be available at or below eighty percent of the AMI per city code. So that leaves one hundred and seventy-nine market-rate units at the LE located at the Lincoln Lane property off of Eden Prairie Road, just would be south of Smith Coffee. So the, and I'll probably read this really quickly because, as I think the mayor and I discussed, the mayor gave a good summary of what tax increment financing is. I think I provided some information at the public hearing that we had at the last meeting. But with the TIF that we're asking for the council to pass a resolution to modify the overall plan and create a new TIF district, TIF District Number Twenty-Five for the LE apartments involves assistance. It would be the property taxes that are generated on-site for the LE of approximately seven million dollars. So when you look at the total payments and then interest, you're looking at over the life of the district or the plan, about eleven point three million dollars that would be repaid over seventeen years as you go financing through the increment of the taxes that are generated at an agreed-upon new value over time. So the city and the HRA do not provide any funding upfront, but we enter into an agreement to provide these tax increment payments from the increased taxes from the project up to a particular dollar amount. So the action here of the HRA then would be to adopt a resolution, as I mentioned earlier, modifying the plan and then approving the District Twenty-Five and then adopting a TIF development agreement. And then again, later on in the meeting, you are asked to consider final approval for the actual project.
Council, any question? Any questions? If not, anyone, would you like to make a motion?
Move to adopt a resolution modifying the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number five, establishing TIF District Number Twenty-Five, LE apartments, adopting a tax increment financing plan, approving the TIF development agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Second out.
Any further discussion or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back into the city council meeting. I was looking for Hennepin County Attorney Mike Freeman. There you are. You're hiding back there. All right. Thank you. Great to have you here tonight. I always appreciate when our elected officials at the county level come to our city council meeting, so we really appreciate you being here tonight.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Councilmembers, thank you. I was in this fine building a few weeks ago with, at the invitation of the mayor and also Mayor Hovland of Edina and with a number of you all here, and your fine police chief was here and other, and lots of individuals around the metro area. Because we were there to talk about juvenile violent carjackings, and that's one of the things I, the mayor asked me to talk about tonight, as well as one of the plans to try to do something about that, which is what I call HEALS two-point-zero. Let me explain where that comes from. In nineteen ninety-seven, a group of business leaders, faith leaders, and law enforcement organized at the Honeywell Campus in Minneapolis, right off the thirty-five W, an effort to address the record level of homicides in the Phillips neighborhood. In nineteen ninety-six, there were twenty-six homicides in that small neighborhood. It created a group called Minnesota HEALS, Hope, Education, Law, and Safety. That partnership with the police, with the community, with the faith group, and some very innovative assistance from the business community helped to reduce the number of homicides from twenty-six to six over a five-year period of time, and included over a sixty percent drop in crime. Lots of times when people come up with a creative solution, it resolves the problem and it ends, which is not an all-too-bad idea. If something works and the problem is basically resolved, let's shut it down. Well, we now have violent juvenile carjackings. We have far too many of them, and it is a complex problem that requires the kind of creative thinking that HEALS created in nineteen ninety-seven. So I decided I would call on a recreation. I call it HEALS two-point-one, two-point-zero, and we're trying to focus with a very direct focus on violent juvenile carjackings. Let me tell you first the difference between a carjacking and a car theft. A car theft is when someone goes to the convenience store and leaves their car running and goes in to get a jug of milk. It's a crime of opportunity lots of times. Unfortunately, people come out and steal their car. That is tragic and that's a crime, but it's not a personal crime, and no one is hurt. That's a car theft. A carjacking is when a felony is created, usually a second-degree robbery or a second-degree assault by a person stealing the car at the hands of someone else. Unfortunately and tragically, the example that many of you all read about was at the Lunsen Byerlys in St. Louis Park in Edina. Ironically, the Edina one is where my wife and I often shop. And people were accosted by armed kids, because that's who they were and are primarily, armed kids, and threatened with stealing their car. That is second-degree assault or second-degree robbery. And thankfully, we have now arrested and are in the process of dealing the juvenile court with those individuals. So I called together the first meeting of HEALS two-point-zero with about thirty folks there. We had a couple of suburban police chiefs. Mayor Hovland is a member of the group. We have several county commissioners, several Minneapolis city council members, Mayor Frye, and also some professionals in the law enforcement world that we need their help from. But most importantly, two leaders in the faith community, a couple of business leaders, including Steve Kramer, the head of Minneapolis Downtown Business Council, and Charlie Weaver, well-known as executive director of the Minnesota Business Partnership, with assistance from them, trying to look comprehensively at what we can do about this carjacking problem. Well, I'm pleased to be here to report on some immediate success. We were able to strike a partnership with the United States Attorney's Office, and they have recently charged two significant adult carjackings. The feds do a pretty good job with adult crime. They really aren't equipped to do juvenile crime. That's with the county attorney's office. But that partnership, I think, is going to be very helpful. The charging rate on carjacking cases brought to my office is eighty-five percent. That's a pretty high charging rate. We don't, that's about what we do on other standard crimes. The problem being is we don't get a lot of cases that come in. The reason being is, you know, the young people are hiding in the bushes. Somebody comes home to start unpacking their groceries, they jump out of the bushes, they have a mask on, a hoodie on, and they steal the car before anybody knows what's happened except the poor person who's hit over the head with a gun. And the identification is very hard. I'm not being critical of your chief or Minneapolis cops for bringing us about twenty-five or thirty percent of those crimes. They are very hard to put together. But I want you to know the ones we get, we prosecute. An eighteen- and nineteen-year-old was recently charged by my office in twenty different carjackings. Many of you know, read the New York Times, and they had a very interesting article this week on carjackings. The presumption or the conclusion of the author is, it's almost a game. Let's go steal a car. Let's have fun. They'll steal the car, they drive a mile or two and leave it. Meanwhile, lots of times they've hit somebody over the head with that gun or caused other injuries, or stolen their purses or their wallets, and it's almost a game. Well, it's not a game to the person who it happened to, nor is it a game to those of us in prosecution and law enforcement. We have work to do. There are a number of things that we'll be considering in our second HEALS meeting on March fourteenth. We just asked a couple of people from the education world, the superintendent from Hopkins School District, I'm sorry, the board chair. We're trying to have a wide-spoke spectrum of folks because juvenile crime requires a much more sophisticated and thoughtful response. The response to juvenile crime cannot merely be lock them up and throw the key away, because we're not going to throw the key away for more than five or six years at a time, and they're going to get out. And if what they have instead of their education in our fine public schools is an education in prison, they're going to come out and degree in crime, and that we've seen that happen over and over again. We must have a place to take violent kids off the street, so hopefully they'll grow out of their anger. But many kids make a mistake along the way, and they shouldn't be branded for their entire life, and drawing the line is always the big challenge. So in HEALS, we're trying to make sure that the kid who's talked into stealing a car when it's left running at the C-store doesn't graduate into violent carjackings. For that, the kid needs some mentoring, it needs some understanding, it needs a job. My friend Louis King, head of Summit Academy OIC, says the best public service program in the world is a job, and he's right. All of us smiling here at this table had a job when we were young. It taught us responsibility, it gave us a little spending money, and it taught us something about growing up. We need to help those, and we will be announcing on the fourteenth a new creative job financed by, partially by Hennepin County, and we're reaching to the business community as well to try to focus, to give these kids who are making the first mistake, an opportunity to understand their talents and get a job. The faith-based community is doing some wonderful work. Bishop Harding Smith in Brooklyn Park has folks on street corners that have been high crime areas in Brooklyn Park. The cops are very pleased they're there, and the crimes in those areas have dropped. Reverend Jerry McAfee today has got people in the skyway that goes downtown at Ninth Street that goes into the Target Building there, which, you know, the skyway has been taken over by homeless folks, and there's lots of violence and problems. Well, McAfee and his folks are moving them along in many ways that we just don't have sufficient Minneapolis police to do that. And finally, Hennepin County is considering a lot of violence prevention grants. So we know it's a big problem, we're trying to do something about it, and I welcome the opportunity to explain that and answer your questions. And unlike what I usually do, you know, Mayor, I've got a little problem. I'm both a lawyer and a politician. That means endless speaking, right, Madam Laura? That's a disease, so I'm going to quit. But I'll answer a couple of questions.
Maggie's not a politician, so she does not have the full problem.
She's got just part of the problem.
I just had a question. Myself and other council members can weigh in here as well, but when you mention this jobs program is focusing in on, I'm going to put it in quotes because you said "the kids," do we have a sense on neighborhoods? You mentioned Brooklyn Park, but do we know where a majority of these kids are coming from that we can focus in on those neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, great question. Carjacking is really strange because it occurs everywhere.
I'm not talking about the carjacking, but the perpetrators.
No, I'm telling you, the carjackings occur everywhere, and we can't necessarily tell that they only come from a particular area of Hennepin County, because they come from lots of different places. But what we're going to be trying to do in the jobs program is the first time a juvenile commits a crime that we see may move into a carjacking, that we immediately give them an opportunity and frankly, push them to take advantage of the mentoring and the job program. I watched my policy aide today working. We are trying to plot every single carjacking that's come to the Hennepin County Attorney's Office since January first, two thousand twenty-one, where, what time of day, and where the people came from. So we'll know a lot more by the end of the week, Mayor.
And my comment was in no way on us versus them or Minneapolis versus suburbs in any way. I just had spoken with some police officers that felt like there was a list of a certain number of young men that they knew, they had their names. We just, to your point, we can't necessarily catch them. My point is this, on your HEALS group committee, why do we not have representation of certain neighborhood blocks or certain parents from certain areas of, including Eden Prairie, but across our Twin Cities that could really help? There's a whole, there's a poverty perspective to this, there's, which is societal in some ways, there's a parenting perspective. There's during COVID, a lot of these kids had no school, or at least, you know, it was at home, and then, and even during times they went back to school, there's nothing after school. A lot of programs have been cut in various cities. So, I mean, it's very, very complicated. I just want to make sure that you've got representation of the lives of many of these perpetrators so we can get really help zeroed in, including jobs and support. Again, as I said, there's a poverty piece to this.
Yeah. Good suggestion, Mayor. I would just say to you, as I've had to say to others, this is, HEALS is a good idea, but I think everybody's been part of groups. If you only have four or five people other than the city council, it's probably too small. If you have fifty or more, it's too big to get anything done. And the joy of the HEALS two-point-zero effort is we have some of the energy of the faith community, and we have some of the resources of the business community. Because we are not going to stop serious crime by either incarcerating everyone or leaving it all up to the police officers or the prosecutors. We can't do it. So we need help. And so far, Kramer and Weaver have been very supportive. You know, Jerry McAfee's been a preacher in North Minneapolis for a long time, but he knows the kids, he knows where they are and where they come from, and lots of ways to deal with them in ways that frankly, government can't and doesn't do a very good job with. The violence interrupters can be helpful. You know, there's always a challenge because violence interrupters don't necessarily go to college, they don't necessarily have a law enforcement degree, but sometimes they can do a lot of things that some of us with degrees can't do.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in very much. Always nice to have you here. Thank you for prioritizing and valuing us and the people of Eden Prairie, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your years of service, too. I know that you're not running again, so we appreciate all the work that you've done.
Councilmember Nelson's husband and Kathy and I have been good friends for a long time. She has aged far better than I, but, you know, it's time to recognize when you get on your horse and ride out to the sunset. That'll be next year. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry, my screen just went off, as well, so I've got to read the paper here. So I think we're moving down to the approval of agenda and other items of business. Are there any agenda items that anyone wishes to add to our meeting this evening? So council member report from council member Norrion. I have also one. Anybody else? Okay, with those two additions, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, the minutes, so we can do, I believe, unless, are there any questions or additions to either the workshop held on February eighth or the city council meeting? If not, is there a motion to combine the two and approve?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. City council meeting held Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, we are moving down to the consent calendar. Pretty lengthy one today, A through J, not as bad as some, no, won't call them bad, just not as long as some. They're all good, sorry, not as good as some. Any items that anybody wishes to question or pull for conversation, discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items A through J on the consent calendar?
I'll move for approval of items A through J on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All right, we have our first public hearing of the evening. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. We have another multifamily housing development project before you. This is Blue Stem North by Greco Properties. The applicant is requesting approval to construct a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-unit apartment building and also a one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-unit apartment building at sixty-eight oh-one Flying Cloud Drive. So this is in the Golden Triangle. This is located on the corner of West Seventieth and Flying Cloud Drive, a stone's throw away from the planned Golden Triangle Light Rail Station in that area. The two buildings that I mentioned are planned to be, Building One is a four- and five-story building, and then Building Two is a mixture of four and five, six stories, and a mixture of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartments with parking included and also many different amenities. I know we're going to have a presentation by the applicant, so I won't get into all the details of that. We'll hear from the applicant. Again, the request is a first reading of an ordinance for a planned unit development with waivers. The waivers are mainly tied to the TOD zoning in the area, and you'll hear about those, and for concept review, zoning change, and preliminary plat. So I believe the applicant, Greco, is here to provide a presentation and overview of the project. We hold a public hearing, and then the applicant and staff are here to answer any questions that the council member, the public, may have.
All right, come forward, please. Name and where you live, what you do.
Great.
Bank number, I don't know.
Yeah. Mayor, council, thank you very much for having me. My name is Josh Branstead. I'm the president and managing partner of Greco. We are based in Minneapolis, Minnesota, at six oh-seven Washington Avenue North, Suite one hundred. Thank you very much for having us. This is a long time coming in our perspective. You know, we've been working pretty tirelessly over the last eight, nine months on this project. Joined here tonight as well with my colleagues from Greco, our partners at Eagle Ridge Partners, who actually own the site currently with another partnership, and then also our team members from BKV Architects, Mike Critch, and then Gretchen Schroder from Westwood Civil Engineering. A little bit about us, Greco, who we are. We're a full-service real estate development and property management group that is celebrating our twentieth year in existence, so it's a big year for us. Over that twenty years, you know, we have, we've remained locally owned and managed, and that's, I think, what we will be forever. We've had involvement in roughly four thousand units across the Twin Cities market, and this is really the only market that we work in. You know, like I said, over the last eight months, there's been a tremendous amount of work, not only on our side, but also at the city level, that is really coming together. At times, I think it's felt like for all of us that we're putting together this Arubix Cube on the site, and we'll talk through some of the constraints that we've faced along the way, which many, I'm sure, that you are all very well aware of as well. So if we could, I'll go ahead and start off with our presentation. Maybe we can go to slide, the next slide, if we could. Oh, there it is. Oh, great. Thank you. So a little bit of context about the site. I'm sure many of you are very familiar with the location, I think, for the folks at home that are viewing on. The box highlighted in yellow is the general context of where the site is located within Eden Prairie. Some of the surrounding uses around us. Interesting enough, the site is bounded on the west side by two-twelve and one-sixty-nine. On the southeast and north side, really primarily light industrial uses. We also have a religious center just to the north of us directly. But I think some of the interesting facts about the site, which I think we can, there we go, which we can all appreciate, it is light rail connected, or will be. We have a connection point as part of our plan proposal. It also has a lot of connectivity to the bike trail systems throughout Eden Prairie, which I think is a big attribute to the site, and I think why people will be drawn here as well. The current status of the site today, if you were out there, it is a vacant site. As you can see, this is a little bit of a dated photo, but the light rail is progressing along. I know it's going to come a little later than I think we were all hoping, but inevitably it will be coming. If we kind of step back a little bit, this is about a fifteen-acre site, but due to some of the constraints we'll talk about tonight, really only about six acres of it is actually developable due to high water, soil conditions, wetlands, conservation easements and whatnot. This site in two thousand and seven was formally proposed and approved as a one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-square-foot office building with an accessory surface parking lot as well. In two thousand and eight, that project did commence. However, during the Great Recession, that project was shut down. And if you see on the image that's up on the screen, you can kind of see the outline of the various foundations and footings that were put into the site. And during that process, they completed about half the soil corrections on the site to make the site developable, but there are still significant constraints related to the soils on the site. So today, it sits, you know, it sits vacant. It abuts right up next to the wetlands, and there's a variety of different conservation easements, setbacks, buffering, et cetera, that really constrain the site. So our proposal is a two-phase redevelopment, and we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of each phase. But from a master site plan to the north is our first phase, and to the south is our second phase. In total, we're proposing roughly four hundred and twenty-five units. You know, I think some of the things that we get really excited about is this is going to be a thriving, light rail-connected site. There's a whole host of environmentally sustainable features that we're incorporating within the project, which we think is really important, given the location. There's access to multi, multiple levels of travel, variety of There's access to multiple levels of travel, variety of housing options that we're going to bring forward, and we actually think that this is really going to be a cornerstone or a catalyst for this whole development along West 70th. We think it's kind of the first of many, many pieces to come down that whole corridor and complement the improvements that have been made so far. I would say, as we look at this photo, what's a little bit different than probably what's in your packets today, you see that southwest corner of the site where there's a conglomeration, we call it the Hill of Trees. There's actually a path that goes around that there that will actually be removed as part of our, as part of our development, and this slide doesn't accurately portray So to just kind of set the stage, so when we reference Phase 1, we're talking about the north building, and then as we reference Phase 2, we'll be talking about the south building this evening. And then we have an additional depiction here, and this really gives you a good portrait of what each phase is delivering. The red, the red is the first phase, and the blue is the second phase. In totality, we'll be delivering 425 units, but the first phase will be 237 units, and the second phase will be 188 units. There'll be a mixture of studios, ones, twos, and threes, like was previously mentioned, and we are also delivering 20% of the units at 50% AMI. That will be spread out evenly, or proportionately, I should say, to the unit mix. And we also have another 5% of the units will be afforded at 80% AMI into perpetuity. Here's some of the perspectives of the site. The first one is from the light rail. As we've, as we've worked through the, you know, the development of the facades, the coloring, et cetera, our development partner, Mike Critch from Eden Prairie, not from Eden Prairie, from BKV is going to come up a little bit later here and really talk more about the details of the coloration. We also have a material board here too to review with you today. But I think you get a good glimpse at the dynamic that, what this view is. As you can see, we have a variety of different tiers within the building that we've tried to incorporate, everything down so that, down from the first level all the way up to the sixth level, so that we can really scale to the pedestrian experiences as people arrive at the site, whether they are going from the light rail and taking a walk on the public boardwalk that goes around the wetlands, or if they're coming from the light rail and coming home to the residential portion of the building. This is more of an aerial perspective. As you, as you look at some of the rendering, some of the key features I think that you'll notice is the substantial amount of landscaping that we brought in with the project as well. We have a variety of different raised courtyard areas where we'll have green roofs incorporated. We have planted beds up there. You know, really the central focus of this project is the connection to nature, and we think that's just such a key element to this site that we want to make sure that we harness and really pay a nod to as we, as we work through the design and the development of the site. There's an abundance of glazing, et cetera, as you look at the, at the site. This rendering is probably the worst rendering that we have of the building. The yellow doesn't come through in the correct tone that it should. Here, it looks very yellow. And again, we'll talk through some of the specifics on that tonight. It's more of a burnt, burnt color that is supposed to really mimic the turn of the, of the wetlands as you go into fall. So as you come back to these, these further back perspectives, it has a little bit of a closer representation. These renderings are really hard to get really tied into what the actual colors are, but we'll look at some of those this evening too. So again, just to summarize, 425 units between the two phases. We have 593 parking stalls, so every, every residential parking stall will be structured and within the building. We have a minimal amount of surface parking here. We also have a central, a central stormwater management system between the two sites. And again, like we've been talking, you know, the connection to the light rails is a big plus for the site. One of the things that we've done with the, the design for both phases, each building will have its own full amenities package. You know, when you get into a lot of these multi-phase developments, a lot of the time the, the trend is to use one building to harness and host all those amenities, where we'll be actually doing them in both buildings. And then we also have a multitude of different sustainability features as well, which, which I think we're really excited about, and, and I think, you know, really pays tribute to, to the nature, to the nature of the site and the wetlands. So with that, I'm going to invite up Mike Critch from BKV. He's the president and local market leader here in Minneapolis, and he'll be able to talk through some of the design details.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll leave it a minute here. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, as Josh stated, my name is Mike Critch with BKV Group. I've been a part of Greco's journey for the 20 years that, that they've been in existence, so we're, we have the pleasure of working on this project as well. So thank you for having us tonight. I just wanted to speak to a few of the slides on the presentation, so if we could put that back up, please. So I'm going to go back to a few of the renderings first. So I think this is a good depiction of how we look to cite the project. It's a very unique site, again, surrounded by the industrial buildings, and with Flying Cloud Drive on the west side, that's, you know, feeder street to all of these various developments. We, we have that part of the project, and then the wetland side of the project, and so they're very distinct. And the, the goal of both phases was to have these various arms of the buildings reaching out towards the wetlands so that every resident who lives here has access to either courtyards or views to the wetlands in most cases. And so within each of those courtyards, we have a lot of amenities and great things related to that. But that, that was a key feature of how we wanted to cite the building. It's also important that we created a lot of variety in the scale and massing of this. And so we have the building on the far right here is at five stories. The building toward, in the middle, it steps down to four stories, and then the building on the left side here is at six stories. So the goal as well is to create a lot of variety in the scale and, and massing of the building. When we go to the next slide here, this is a representation from Flying Cloud Drive and what you would see from 212, and I think it's actually a very important rendering, and I'll get into the materials of it. But this is the entrance into the development, and the whole idea was to create this variety and this welcoming entrance that brings you into a turnaround, that provides the drop-off for both buildings, as well as it opens up to the wetlands. So as you drive in, those are an important factor. Also, along, along here with the two different buildings, we wanted, we looked at them as being with the material palettes being kind of siblings in, in character in that the common material would be the vertical standing seam material that's in this golden yellow ochre color, and, and that kind of echoes the patterns and textures of the reed grasses in the, in the wetlands that you see. So we're, we're trying to tie this into kind of the characteristics of that vertical orientation of the grasses. The building on the left, the, the corner features and main features then are in a lighter gray tone, and then the six-story building on the right side, that gray tone becomes a dark charcoal tone. So the, the idea, the materials are, it's really actually just a few material colors, and they're represented to be natural earth and tones, and with the accent color being that, the golden yellow ochre tone. And, and again, I'll show, I'll talk about that on the boards as well, as far as that representation. And then, let's see, I might be going the wrong way. And then I think, lastly, this is, I think, as well, a good representation of the architectural quality of it, in that we tried to really create a very sculptural-looking project, so it has a lot of different facets to it. The ground-level planes relate to the pedestrian character. The amenity areas have kind of screened in a lot of glass structures that are one-story in height, and then as the buildings step up, they step back as well, and they terrace, and they have angled and angular parapets and tops as well to provide a lot of variety as well, so that every angle and, and perspective is, is different and unique. With that, I'll, I'll move to the color palettes, and in front of me is, is the materials board, and I'll put up a rendering here as well. And again, it's pretty simple in terms of a very, what we think is a very timeless color palette that's natural in colors and palette with mostly neutral colors and then an accent color of this yellow ochre that does with, you can see kind of with these photographs, the idea of recalling some of the colors found in nature, in, in this case, the turn of the colors of the wetlands and the fall leaves and that kind of thing. And that's where that color comes from. The other, being the grays, topes, and dark bronze are, again, very neutral, natural color palettes. And then the other renderings just show the different buildings, and they, they use them in varied ways, in a different ways. This, the, the bottom rendering, we have a series of bay windows or bays that pop up and down to break up that parapet. And again, this just shows different views of the different building types. With that, I'll, I'll leave that and turn it back over to Josh or for, for you if you have questions. So thank you very much.
So is that the end of, for now, the proponents, or do you want to finish a couple comments? If we have questions, we can ask now or possibly later too. This is a public hearing, so at some point we'll open it up. Do you have something else you want to close with, or?
Nope. Nope, I think we're done.
Okay. Council, do you have a couple of questions now prior to the public hearing?
Well, I'm not sure.
It's up to you. It's good.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions. I had a question about the parking, where in our packet it says basement-level parking can only be partially underground with no option for two levels of underground parking. In order to meet the parking requirements, the applicant is proposing parking on the first floor along with some units. So there's going to be parking and then apartments? I mean, have, I, I just want you to address like the noise, the air filtration, is that, I mean, how are they going to be segregated?
Yeah. Yeah, so this is actually a concept that we've incorporated in, I think, the last three projects we've, we've developed, where we do have parking on that first level, and there, there will be a wrap component with housing directly adjacent. You know, if you think of, and if you think of the way these buildings are designed, housing's sitting on top of that parking already, and really we're just, we're just now just putting it in front of it. But, you know, related to air quality, et cetera, you know, there's large makeup air units within these garages that circulate based on CO levels, et cetera, temperature, and then additionally, any of the, any of the separation components too are rated up to code and whatnot, so that there's no unnecessary noise travel between the two spaces.
Have you ever had an issue with it before in any of the other projects?
No, usually you would see an issue around the garage door, since that's where the majority of the noisy activity is, but we have ways to isolate the reverberation, so that's usually within the units that are above.
Okay. And I just have one more question about noise with the light rail. Are there any special materials that you're using, or do you think that the noise from the light rail won't make an impact, or even the noise from the, the highways that are close by?
Yeah. So we've done two projects that have very similar characteristics to this site, one in South Minneapolis that is much closer to the light rail, within, within about a half-block of the light rail. We don't have issues there. Here, we're obviously much further separated from the light rail here, so we do not see as an issue here. And then we've also had, along I-94, as it comes into downtown Minneapolis, you know, we've developed a building there four or five years ago that sat right, you know, within two-street widths away from the on-off ram from 94. We use a high-level, high-quality window system within these buildings. It's a fiberglass-style system, Anderson 100. It has a good STC rating. I think, I believe it's a 32 STC rating, and we haven't had any issues within there. We've also gone as far on that project where we had, in the event that there was that issue, we had an interior, think of it as a storm, but it's not, but it matches the aesthetics of the permanent window, if you want to call it that. That would actually sit the interior in the event that we did have noise transfer issues.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers want, okay, yes, councilmember Freiber.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of questions here. I know it's two phases. Phase 1 has 237 units. What's the mix of the units?
Yeah, so we have a mixture of studios, ones, twos, and threes. Roughly 35% of the, excuse me, roughly 65% of the, the building will be studios and one-bedrooms, with remaining 35% twos and threes.
How many of those are three-bedroom?
I believe we have 20 in the first phase, and I believe we have 15 in the second phase, if I...
Okay, so Phase 2, which is 188 units, is that about the same mix then, except?
Exactly.
As far as like studios and one-bedroom?
Exactly. It would be.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We will, either way, we will have some, after we close the public hearing, we can certainly... Okay. Sometimes it's nice for the public if there's a question that could be answered early, but if you have a question you want to dig deeper, and we could wait, so it's totally up to you. I just...
I'll go. Now, now talk...
Well, now, now I just decided you're not going, so, no, please go.
So first, I want to say, I think it's beautiful.
Right.
In my eye, and, and of course, everybody think differently, but I think the whole architectural aspect is just, just great. So congratulations, and thank you that you're building apartments in Eden Prairie. We really appreciate that, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Also, I know, my, my colleagues sitting here, they always make jokes about, do you have any AV stations, AV charging stations? So I'm glad to see that you do have them. So thanks again.
We don't make jokes about the charging stations. We make jokes about you. No, no, just you. So just get that straight.
Me, okay. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. They really want to ask, but they don't ask. I'm always asking.
I understand that.
We're glad you're here.
And also, I want to say, the affordability aspect and sustainability aspect also, it's well-represented. Appreciate that. Now I do have a couple of questions.
All right.
Okay. I didn't see anything related to trees. Do you have to remove a lot of trees, or didn't, or, or I didn't read well. I don't know which one.
Yeah, so we have roughly, so we're required to, I believe, replace, it was 400 and some odd caliber inches of trees. We're actually going to exceed that quite a bit. We'll be over 500 caliber inches of trees. You know, if you looked at some of the, I always take the last three projects we've developed in the municipalities of Shoreview and Champlin, our border trees, we really like to bring in oversized trees, and so any of the pine trees that we bring in will usually be between 16 and 20 feet versus, you know, your standard development is that eight-foot pine, along with any of the other, the, the non-coniferous trees that we bring in. We usually try to hit a height of 12, 12 feet as a minimum, which we usually bring you to about a three-inch caliber tree. Now, there will be some smaller than that, and there'll be some that may exceed that size as well, but those are usually our general targets. We will exceed the, you know, the replacement here, though.
So another interesting thing, when, when you see that, that one of the pictures, the roof kind of seems empty. Is there any plan to do something on the roof?
The roof of the apartment buildings?
Yeah. Just white and empty.
We would, we would love to, you know, we run into some pretty big cost constraints there. We do have on the top floor of each building, we've taken out one of the bigger, larger units there, and we've created what we call a cocktail lounge, really that has views over the wetlands. So that kind of simulates our rooftop for us, and we did that on both buildings. But once we get up to that, you know, the top of the, the building, if you're going to have a, a room that justifies really the cost, bring that extra elevator step up, you need to have two exit paths, which obviously get a little bit cost problematic for us as well, and then just given it's a rated, it's a rated structure, we have to, you know, adhere to some pretty small parameters there as well. to some pretty small parameters there as well.
You know, total unit, how many units you are talking about?
Yeah, 425 units between.
It's a lot of units. Have you considered having a restaurant or convenience or something that this many people, they want to just run down and get a sandwich and?
Yeah. We did. We actually, you know, the site plan that you see today is probably our eighth iteration of this site plan. We actually had looked at early on putting some retail on that West 70th corridor. This site would generate a lot of retail sales on a weekly basis, but not enough to support wholly a retail user, a restaurant user on its own. So, we'd really need another, you know, another, we'd have to be sitting on that retail corridor along West 70th to really draw enough in sales, I think. And at that end of the site, there are some pretty stringent conservation easements down there that preclude us from doing that.
And my last question regarding LRT, I think my colleague asked that. So, you're not concerned about noise because you already have experience, right? What about, you know, we get calls about vibration. The three things we usually get, noise, vibration, and potential people coming in and crime, right? So, vibration aspect, do you see any concern the residents will have?
You know, not, given our distance of separation, no.
Okay. Thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you.
I have questions, but I'm willing to wait.
Okay. I thought I would ask one of mine now just because it has to do with parking and in case, again, it was a question from the audience, but so you had 17 outside of the building on-site parking spots for the 425 units. So, if guests came, they're allowed also, are there like guest parking spots in the parking garages of both buildings?
So, we've designed the first phase to be able to accommodate parking within the first, you know, so many feet of that garage where we'll have an actual internal door as well that the actual residents will click through to go into the, into the permanent residential parking. So, in the event that we needed additional guest parking, we will have access there on a flex basis.
To the area outside of where the garage door is?
Yeah, so in that north building, so Phase one building, where we have the turnaround and the roundabout, they actually have their first level garage entrance right there. So, there will be basically kind of a recess garage there. So, you'll go through the first door and that will either be resident and guest parking and then you'll go through a second door, which will take you into secured resident.
So, how many total guest parking spots are there in this first building?
Well, within the first building, you'll have the surface stalls of 12 that will deliver with the first building and then we will have up to another 20 to 30 that we could host inside if we needed to. Now, that would, you know, that would carve into the residential parking as well a bit. But, I think from, we've got three projects in similar locations as this project right here. We built those projects, one stall per bedroom, plus or minus, you know, we're at .98 per bedroom. And they actually are parked at about a .92 per occupied bedroom. So, our ratio allows for some variance there.
I mean, that's the hope with light rail, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the idea of all this.
Right.
It's just, you know, the party that occurs between five residents that have the big party together, I don't know, whatever, and we have that one bad parking night, you know, and where do they park, you know?
Right.
Okay. We'll maybe call you back up. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council this evening on the Blue Stem North apartment building project? Yes, please come forward. Yes, give your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Young, resident on Acorn Ridge here in Eden Prairie. Don't know anything about wetlands, but I'm just curious, how do you manage the water, mosquitoes, algae, whatever things grow in lakes around here?
Oh, so who would we like to have answered?
Mr. Ellis.
Mr. Ellis.
I'll take a stab.
I was going to give a stab at it, but I think you're definitely the guy that should take this.
Well, there is, there is the mosquito control district. It's, you know, they're a taxing authority and so the money they generate used to go around all of Hennepin County and they track where some of these larva beds are and they do treatment for them. You see them in the summer. It's the small helicopter that's flying around the community. That's them doing their work, but they are the agency that's charged with mosquito control.
Is that the mosquitoes the gist of your question? I mean, it was a little bit longer than that, but just managing.
I guess if it's hard, is that thing fills in with algae mud?
Sure.
Storm, yeah.
So, this is a natural wetland, except I did read there's some mitigation of wetland in here, which was my question in a moment. But, with the natural wetland, I mean, nature takes its course. We do have wet ponds in our city that are in NERC ponds, National Urban River Protection Ponds, which are out of the 91 Wetlands Act, that every new development has to capture its water. So, those ponds were responsible for, we would actually dredge because they would over time gather sediments. That's their job. Naturally occurring wetlands, so I'm going out on a limb here, but Julie and Robert helped me, I would assume we would want to stay natural and let nature do its job. And if over, if you come back in 20,000 years, this pond will be filled in and that's what nature's doing. But, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so that's correct. And there's also a stormwater treatment system that's going in with this development project as with all development projects where they have to capture and control the rate of volume as it leaves the site so it doesn't cause flooding problems downstream, but also capture that and treat it for any impurities, sand, grit, hydraulic fluids from vehicles. And those are being treated through an underground storage system that they're installing on the site, I believe under their entry driveway. So, that will treat that stormwater before it's released then into the wetland because the wetland does need water to continue to be a wetland, but we want it as clean as possible before it discharges into the wetland. So, all of that is done onsite before it enters the wetland.
Your question stopped me for a moment just because for 30 years, I've been up here, sitting here with people coming, wetlands are sacred, protect them, you know, you can't possibly even, you know, think of filling one in. I mean, that's how I first got elected in 1994 on a never fill a wetland pledge. Within a month, I'd voted to fill two, but, but there were reasons and the greater good of all, one was up where Elevate is, that whole neighbor, that area where we got a bus transit station there and it was an inferior wetland and I felt like my grandkids' world was better off if they had buses versus, you know, and if you do fill a wetland, you have to mitigate it two to one. That's going to be my question in a moment about this project. But, so anyway, you just, wetlands have been sacred in our city and it's been something that we've always tried to have more of them and I realize there probably are some negative aspects to them, but in general for society, I think the positives greatly outweigh them. But, thank you though for your question. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on this project tonight? So, counsel, why don't you close the public hearing and then we'll take a few more council questions?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
What, we don't have to second it. What's your question?
My only question was, is we can close the public hearing about the rest.
And do what? Without the rest?
Without the rest because there are things I want to get clarified.
No, I do too. That's why, yep, perfect. So, you moved, nope, you're fine. We need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, now, it's closed and we can continue to discuss. So, do you, let's see, should we just head down or do you want to, oh, well, you, you know.
I haven't had a chance yet.
You are right on. I caught that in my mind as I was saying it. Councilmember Nelson.
Okay, you do have a lot of units that are at a lower AMI unit. My question is, is what, you know, you have studios which are very small, not family places, one bedroom, still small, some two and three bedrooms. What is the percentage of the two and three bedrooms that will fall under this where they're family-friendly versus the studio or one bedroom might be a couple or individual? What I don't want to hear is they're all the studio.
No, definitely not. So, to your point and then Councilmember Freiberg, I was incorrect before, we have 21 three bedrooms in that first phase and we have 19 in the second phase, 65 twos in the one first phase and then 56 in that second phase. So, the affordability, to your question, Councilmember Nelson, the affordability is proportionally split throughout all the unit types. So, if one unit type represents 10% of the units, they'll get 10% of affordable units as well.
Excellent, because, yeah, I know, we do have families that have needs and this looks like a wonderful place to live. I do like the fact that your trees and bushes and beds are all basically natural, good for, you know, birds, insects, and everything else around it. So, I do appreciate you've made definite attempts to that, even gotten bushes that have to have other similar kinds of bushes in there and such. Also, it looked like you had natural flower areas as well, perennials, I take it. That really didn't say where that was, but.
Yeah, primarily those will be around the edge of the building, specifically as you enter the buildings and then around the courtyards as well.
Okay, so it's not all bushes. There are perennials as well. It looked like they were both pretty and once again, butterfly friendly and things. Generally, I like the looks of this, I've got to say. The last question is, when do you anticipate Phase two might start, given you have to fill a bunch of the first one, but I assume you have a hopeful date?
Yeah. We actually would like to move them both forward sooner than we originally planned to here, just given the volatility of the construction market right now and the cost and we don't really know where things are going to go in two to three years from now. So, our plan would be to break around on Phase one in August and then break around in the second phase in February of '23.
So, they will be going up very quickly because it said something about once they had a certain percentage rented, but.
That was our original approach too. We recently just did this delivery between a project in Shoreview and a project in Champlin and they, we spaced out the construction starts by about six months, six months and it allowed us to lease through one phase and then as the units came online.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that. Might not be, five years down the road, maybe we'll do a building, so, thank you.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it seems like Councilmember Nelson and I are on the same wavelength on that because we do have families, you know, that the biggest need, you know, realistically is on the top end and the least need would be on efficiency when it comes down to affordable housing out here. I have to clarify, I got your answer as far as, that you gave to Councilmember Nelson. One question I had, I didn't hear the beginning part. What I think I heard is it's proportionate.
Correct.
Now, this is, this isn't all of a sudden going to switch because this could greatly affect the way I think about things as far as all of a sudden halfway through, now you're, now we're starting to shift off, still meeting our numbers on percentage, but all of a sudden the units are getting smaller. I guess, you know, it's that important right now as far as, I mean, it's a great project. There's no question about it. I just always have a concern to make sure, you know, some, you know, that, and I'm just going to plead that, you keep, you know, tight on what you just said as far as those affordability. It is a big deal.
Yep. Yeah, and I think that's going into our proposed agreement for the project and our development agreement for the project as well. So, we will definitely hold to.
It's a good-looking project.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Narayan.
Thank you. So, I have two questions. Why Eden Prairie? You're a developer, you've been 20 years, you said, right? Something like that? And just curious, your perspective?
Well, I think if you look at the demographics of this whole southwest corridor, so if you kind of take it from a big picture perspective, the demographics check really well for rental in this area. And then I think when, for us, being locals, we boil it down in more of the granular things, it's the connectivity to local amenities and then specifically this site, the connectivity to the outdoors. It's been a big focus of ours over the last six years. If you look over our last three, four developments that we've done, every one of them has had a very substantial focus on the outdoor connectivity and, and I mean, this is, I don't know that you could find a better site in the Twin Cities to do that here. And I think it really, you know, it gets us very excited. The light rail connectivity is definitely a plus. I think we'd still be here even if the light rail wasn't here, but I think, you know, and I think it goes without being said, but the city of Eden Prairie does a very good job of taking care of their city too. And the last three projects we've done have also been in great municipalities and they do a good job taking care of their cities and people want to be there because of that. So, I think those would be the real four big drivers for us.
And the best place to live in the world, right?
Yes.
I have one more question though. So, so today, a lot of people working from home. So, my question relate to broadband. So, are you pre-wiring broadband connectivity to the apartment and I'm talking about very high speed, you know, up to 900 meg or fiber or, I'm just curious about that connectivity aspect.
Yeah, all of our buildings are fiber-connected and then we wire fiber within the internal components of the building as well. And then we have right now the capabilities up to a gig at every single unit, dedicated gig.
So, that means any resident can get broadband from CenturyLink with, I mean, my son just got 900 meg connectivity from CenturyLink on fiber. So, I'm just curious, if they want to, they can get that?
Right, exactly. And we've, six years ago, we kind of adopted a system that we work with a service provider. We can go up to a gig in each unit and it's, it's given us a little bit better control than other services, but I think, you know, as part of these projects, we will, you know, we'll evaluate every provider that we can at the site. But, yeah, the gig, one gig is kind of our standard that people can upgrade to from their base service.
Yeah, I think that's enough.
Yeah, I would hope.
I thank you.
Who knows, I guess there's five gig coming, right?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Nothing?
No, just welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one more question and it's really not for you, so you're welcome to be there or not or go back. It's, I think it's more for Julie, but over the years, for the very few wetlands that I've been part of voting to fill and been very stingy with that vote, but each time they had to be mitigated two to one and they had to be mitigated within the watershed. So, and maybe this is Mr. Ellis, but what I never knew is that something in our packet talks about this particular type of wetland, which is one that's protected by declarations of restrictions and covenants and it's that one that's actually a mitigated wetland. So, what I never knew is that that kind of mitigated wetland can never be filled, right? Because it's like, it's like filling one that was already, okay, I just had never read that before. So, do you happen to know offhand which project bought this land and then dug this wetland out and then mitigated this wetland? I mean, is it something that was contiguous around there and years back?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe that was done as part of the Liberty Plaza approvals back in 2007, 2008.
Okay. I ever so sadly was not on the council for those two years, so I wasn't part of that. Interesting, all right. Well, sadly for me. I hope it's sad for maybe others. All right. Thank you. So, that was the question I had about wetlands. Anything else before the council? Are we ready to vote? And we need a motion on the next four bullets on our motion.
I will move to adopt a resolution for a guide plan change from TOD to parks in open space on 11.17 acres and adopt a resolution for a planned unit development concept review on 15.28 acres and approve the first reading of an ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 15.28 acres and a zoning change from office to TOD-R on 5.79 acres and from office to P/OS on 11.17 acres and adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat of two parcels into two lots and two outlots on 16.96 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second down.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, welcome.
Beautiful place.
All right, Mr. Getcho, CDBG action plan.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, councilmembers, each year, you, we, the city receives money from the federal government, pass-through funding, we like to call it community development, block grant funding from HUD, from the Federal Housing and Urban Development Program, typically in the neighborhood of $300,000. We don't know the exact amounts till we get closer to the summer, but we do have to adopt a resolution approving the use of the monies that we will receive from the federal government that must only be used for supporting those with low to moderate incomes. And so, typically, we do two different types of activities. We have public service activities, which is the city granting funds to our nonprofits for different programs. And in this case, we have three different programs from PROP that had a recommended amount of funding and a committee of a city committee, a human services review committee, agreed to. committee, a human services review committee, agreed to fund at all the recommended levels for those three programs of housing support services, emergency vehicle repair, and childcare. And then we also provide home funding through our senior community services program for household and outside maintenance for the elderly. And as you know, some of these programs are also funded through our other budget dollars, but these are strictly for community development block grant dollars. We also use a large chunk of funds for housing, city housing programs, housing rehab programs, rehab loans we provide, rehab grants, first-time homebuyer program, and partnering with WALT, which is the West Hennepin Area Housing Land Trust. That's actually the ability for that organization to actually buy detached, single-family homes, affordable homes for people, not just necessarily home rehab loans or funding for the services. So we, as you can see in the packet, there is a breakdown of all the requests and the committee's recommendations of funding at those different levels, which adds up to $395,000 being allocated. Again, some of these are estimates, because we won't know our true funding amounts, but we usually never have to adjust any of our grants for our nonprofits. We'll adjust maybe some of our own housing loan programs. But we haven't had to do that, because sometimes we actually receive more, in most cases, a little bit more than what we request. So the council needs to hold a public hearing for the use of these funds, and then take action to adopt a resolution recommending the use of them.
Counsel, are you okay if we go ahead and open up the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on CDBG funding plan for the city, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jennifer Loon, Executive Director of PROP Food in Eden Prairie, one of the nonprofits that the city manager, Mr. Getchow, mentioned. We have been very gratified to be partners with the city in the expenditure of the CDBG grant funds that have been very generously provided to PROP. For folks in the audience who may not know, because I know you're all familiar, but PROP is a food shelf, but we also provide a number of financial programs and services to people in need who come to us. And one of those, probably the biggest service in demand that we see clients for is housing assistance. And so the CDBG homelessness prevention funds, housing funds that we receive through this block grant is very much needed. Our demand is going through the roof, literally. As you know, the city has received additional COVID-specific housing funds, which we've also been the recipient of and been providing funds to people. But last year, the city provided $43,000 to PROP in the community development block grant funds. And we are on track to exhaust all of the funds allocated to us. And I would say with four months remaining in our fiscal year, it's on the same fiscal year as this program in the city, we've already spent 83% of our homeless prevention funds from that allocation. As I mentioned, housing is the greatest need we see, but we also do car repairs as well as childcare for specific purposes, to help people bridge into perhaps a better job, something that provides them more economically. And so all of those services are ones that residents of Eden Prairie come to us when they're experiencing financial difficulty or catastrophe. I will tell you that in the past, we have found, this is pre-pandemic, that with the assistance of maybe two to three months of assistance for housing and other financial supports, perhaps, we've been able to stabilize a family. They've been able to get back on their feet and really, you know, work through whatever brought them to the point of needing assistance at PROP and move on. The pandemic has really stressed that experience, and it is much, the need is much greater and more intense. I would say probably many families could almost double that time period of needing assistance. Unfortunately, there just aren't as many funds available as we'd like to see. The other thing that has really impacted our housing requests right now is that the federal COVID response money that came to every state, in Minnesota it was called Rent Help MN. Those funds were exhausted, and that program closed down with really very little notice, about three days' notice, towards the end of January. And PROP is a resource really of last resort. We do try to refer clients to other forms of assistance, maybe through Hennepin County or the state or other types of assistance, in order to stretch the funds that we have available. So as I said, since the Rent MN shutdown is no longer available, we are seeing dramatic need. So we have, as you know, we serve both Eden Prairie and Chanhassen, but most of the housing assistance that we provide actually is to Eden Prairie families. Obviously, all of the community development block grant money we receive goes to Eden Prairie families. But of all of the funds that we have at PROP to provide housing up to year-to-date, it's been 30 families, and 26 of those have been Eden Prairie residents. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But again, would just like to thank you so much for your support. We greatly appreciate it. The need is there, and we are very glad, again, for the partnership with the city through these funds to provide help and stabilization to families in need.
Thank you. I think we'll let other people, if they're here, from the recipients, but, and then maybe, counsel, if you have questions about any particular program, we can call them back up. But thank you so much, and PROP's amazing. We just, you know, I tell people all the time that city government simply could not begin to do the things that PROP, Prop Shop, Meals on Wheels, I mean, these are just phenomenal nonprofits in our cities. So thank you for all that you do, your organization, but also you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? Name and address, and why you're here.
Yeah, my name is John Burkhau. I'm the Home Program Director for Senior Community Services. Our main office is based out of Minnetonka. And for those of you maybe watching at home who aren't familiar with the Home Program, we basically help older adults remain in their homes in their communities by helping with the upkeep of their homes. So this typically is lawn mowing, snow shoveling, repairs, cleaning, some of those things that get harder to do as you age and maybe experience different health conditions. And we also offer free safety checks. We do a lot of fall prevention work as well, trying to eliminate injuries in the home. Last year continued to be a really challenging year, multiple effects of COVID, which we all dealt with, of course, but was especially difficult for our older residents that we work with every day. And so I feel that our mission was even more important during that time. People wanted to be in their homes. That was the safest place for them to be, and our work helped enable folks to do that. Eden Prairie has been a longstanding partner. We're very grateful for your support, for the extra money that you provided during the time of COVID, helping with masks and other things. It was really, really important. I just wanted to share a couple of the comments we received. We send out a survey every year, and this helps give it a little bit of context to what we do. But one person commented, "Thanks for the reassurance you give me when I call with questions. I'm a widow and have major back issues. Your kindness and help has been great." And another person said, "Love the program and staff. Older adults can live in their homes independently because of the valuable services provided by loving and caring staff. Keep up the great job." And so I think most of us, our day-in-and-day-out work is, you know, making sure the work gets done and the upkeep gets done. But I think what gets me out of bed in the morning and what gets my staff out of bed in the morning is the relationships that we develop, not only us in the office, but the folks that are out doing the volunteer work and the paid work, get to know folks. If you go to somebody's house, you clean a couple of times a month for four hours, I mean, they might not see their grandkids that often. So you really get to know people, and those relationships are really what's key. One of the things that was born out of COVID, which actually isn't funded through CDBG, is a technology pilot that we've been doing for the last several months, and we're going to be rolling out that technology pilot here in Eden Prairie and across Hennepin County, but basically offering older adults one-on-one tech support, teach them how to use different iPads, smart TVs, smartphones, anything they might need help with. It's been very well received, as you might imagine. COVID kind of compounded that need for all of us, right, to know how to work all that sort of stuff. Sometimes older adults aren't as familiar, didn't grow up with the technology. And so we're very happy to kind of roll out that program, and we'll be working with the community center here in Eden Prairie and other ways to kind of advertise that service as it becomes available. The last thing I wanted to share is kind of a fun thing. We're going to be polar plunging here in Eden Prairie. I don't know if I have any fellow plunders in the room?
Everyone duck quick.
Well, our team is called Reimagine Aging. We do a lot of education about what it means to get older and what that might look like. But if you want to join our team, you certainly can do that. We started doing that about four years ago. We took a little break during the pandemic. We did it a couple of times in Minneapolis. I'm like, we've got to change it up. Let's go out to Eden Prairie. They've been a great partner of ours. So we'll be out on the 12th.
July or August you jump, or?
The 12th, a week from Saturday, over at Riley Lake. So, you know, when you're in the snow removal business, you've got to take winter head-on, right? Show that you're not afraid of it. So we'll have a lot of fun. We'll be back here in town for that. So, but again, thank you so much for all your support.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
It's a great program as well.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that. Anybody else in the, yes, come forward.
Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Brenda Lano-Wolke, and I am the Executive Director of Homes Within Reach. We are the community land trust program that operates within your community. We serve the Hennepin County areas of the western suburbs. Currently, we're in 14 communities, while our service area is all communities other than Minneapolis. Currently, we have 17 homes in Eden Prairie. We added a home last year, and that is serving a family at 54% area median income. Rather than give you a lot of statistics, this program allows hard-working families the opportunity to have homeownership in communities where they choose to live where they otherwise couldn't. This year's home was sold to a single-parent household. They had left a bad relationship and have custody of their two children. They had looked for a home for a year and a half. Their real estate agent had taken them to many different areas, and with what they could afford, he in good conscience just felt they couldn't buy these homes. The homes needed way too much repair. There was no way they were going to be able to address the need. And so he brought this person to our program and said, "Learn about this community land trust model and what it is." They eventually did end up purchasing here in Eden Prairie. The home that they purchased is a three-bedroom, was built in 1972. It's a three-level split. The third level was basically unfinished. It had one bathroom, very small bathroom. And so we were able to take that $80,000 of CDBG money. It allowed us to leverage funds from Met Council, Hennepin County, and the state of Minnesota. We put in another $125,000 into that home. We addressed all the health and safety issues. We redid a radon mitigation system that was actually dumping the radon back into the home. We removed rotted windows and replaced those. The home did have vinyl siding, but they never addressed the soffits and the fascia, which were also rotting. So we replaced and fixed that and made that all maintenance-free. When all was said and done, we put about $60,000 into the home for repairs. We added a second bathroom. With a three-bedroom home and two children, we felt that was a good use of those funds. We finished off that basement so that they had another family room, three-quarter bathroom, it has new air conditioning, new furnace. This is a home that, for at least the next 10 years, they should not have to put any funding into. The story that's really important is what does it do for these families? And this homeowner, after they moved in, wrote a letter to us and explained, and sent a picture of her kids. Those kids had been sharing a bedroom with their parent at their grandparents' house since the divorce, because they couldn't find anything that they could afford, not in homeownership, not in rental. When they were brought into their new home, and they were told that these were their bedrooms and they were each going to have their own bedroom, they laid on the floor and cried. We got pictures at Christmas telling us this was the first time in many years that they were able to host Christmas and have fun. So it's the funds that you guys provide to our organization that allow us to make that impact for these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. It's a great program. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council on this issue? Counsel, go ahead and someone make the motion.
Move to adopt the resolution approving use of the 2022 CBDG funds and as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Review Committee.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you again, all of you. All right, payment of claims. Any items to question? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Mr. Getcho, and maybe this is to our city attorney as well, and I forget robber's rules of order. Can we, can I have someone make, like, a motion that they move the six-for-one commission, that kind of a thing, or should I? Well, what do I have in front of me here? First, I have, oh, they're all separate.
Mayor, mayor, that could all be one.
We can go down the line and make it all one motion, and then second that, and then we can, oh, got it, got it, got it. So why don't we just then start on maybe Councilmember Toomey's side? So, Mr. Getcho, do you want to say what we're doing and why we're here?
Why we're here? Yeah. So every year, mayor and council, as you know, we, at this time of year, commission terms are three years, every year expiring for certain commission members at the end of March. So you solicit applications in the month of January, interview in the month of February, the end of February, and I will, I think it's important to mention interview. The full city council interviews all applicants for all commissions. That's not common in every city, but you actually conduct an interview. So you did that last Tuesday, spent an evening interviewing, I don't remember the exact number, but I'm going to say close to 30 people. And now you are taking action to appoint certain individuals to six different commissions. We've had the, I would say, good luck of having more applicants than we have positions for. So I think, as the mayor says, if you don't hear your name called and you interview, please consider applying again next year. And there are other programs, like our city government academy, that would allow people to still be involved in the community. So again, following these appointments that you're going to vote on tonight, the city will contact all the people, even those that did not get appointed, to encourage them to apply again. And then those that are appointed, we have an orientation session at the end of the month, and then all of these new commission members will take their seats for all of the April commission meetings. So I think that covers my overview. Yeah.
And just maybe to underscore and add to that, one of the pleasurable moments that the council participates in throughout the year is the night of the interviews, because we get a chance to see everyone that is interested in serving on a commission. And one of the most difficult parts of that is each night not being able to place everyone on a commission. We try as best we can, but inevitably, we can't do that. And so I just want to thank everyone who wants to be on a commission, wants to volunteer for the city, and definitely... for the city and, and definitely, as Mr. Getchow said, encourage you to continue to apply, that we keep your name. I mean, if an opening happens during the year, that's the list we go to first. So, just, just know that we do deeply appreciate truly, if we can't, even if we can't get you on, we appreciate you applying. With that, Councilmember Toomey, do you want to start then with the Flying Cloud Airport and we'll move, I guess I'll be part of it if that's okay and then we'll just cycle back around?
Sure. I will move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission, Mark Morhak, filling a community seat with a term ending March 31st, 2025.
Oh, yes, please.
I move to appoint the Heritage Preservation Commission, Andy Ladracy and Andrew Scipioni with term ending March 31st, 2025.
I'm sorry, you were on the first Andrew, so I messed you up there. And then move to appoint to the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, Christine Kleckner with term ending March 31st, 2024. Babar Khan, Jodi Knight, Shram Masagi, Brenda Fawnal, Kuhu Singh, and Philip Skye. Skye, I should, no, Phil, sorry about that. Skye, yep, I know that, with terms ending March 31st, 2025.
Move to approve to the Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission, Keith Choel with a term ending March 31st, 2024, and Sarat Bu Alturu Dipa Bujli and Pedro Curry with terms ending March 31st, 2025.
I move to appoint to the Planning Commission, Daniel Groth, Jean Kurt, and Frank Sherwood with terms ending March 31st, 2025.
And I'll move to appoint to the Sustainability Commission, Carolyn Wyland with a term ending March 31st, 2024, and Laura Bishop, Tim Connors, and Gretchen Enenga with terms ending March 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Congratulations to all those people. The next is commission chairs and vice chairs. Mr. Getchow, anything?
Mayor, again, each year, council votes annually for chairs and vice chairs.
Okay, Councilmember Freiberg, would you start?
I move to appoint Dan Dorson Chair and Andrew Kleinfeld, Vice Chair of the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission.
I move to appoint Rod Fisher Chair and Paul Thorpe, Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission.
I move to appoint Gregory Leeper Chair and Shram Masagi, Vice Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
I move to appoint Patrice Erickson Chair, Cecilia Serrantes Vice Chair as the Park and Recreation and Natural Resources Commission.
I'll move to appoint Andrew Piper Chair and Ed Farr, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
And I move to appoint Aaron Polk Chair and Emily Eddy Thies, Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, Mr. Getchow, the Board of Appeal and Equalization.
Thank you, mayor. This is a specialized group that meets once at most twice a year to hear any appeals that property owners in Eden Prairie may have on their value notices. And the people that are appointed to serve on this are typically real estate professionals that are already working in the west metro area. Several members, there are five, that we asked to appoint do extensive real estate work specifically in Eden Prairie, and I said the southwest metro area, and have been on this commission in the past.
All right, council, any questions? Is there a motion?
Move to appoint the Board of Appeal and Equalization, Lyndon Moquist, Eileen Kanakis, James Lover, Nate Thompson, and Kristen Rial for the period of March 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2022, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, whoop, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, we have reports of council members first. Is that fine? Yes, okay. Councilmember Narayan, you had asked to share something.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council members. And this week, as you all know about the Ukraine war, and last day or so, I called Rick Getchow, talk about that, and I got multiple calls from residents related to banning Russian goods in Eden Prairie. And today, I think it's today, I saw that we decided with the DINA and other cities that banned Russian products from our liquor store. And I just want to say, I fully support this decision. I think it's the right thing to do, what's happening. It's going to kill thousands of people in the world there and it's so sad. And so, we should do anything we can support every part of the world, doesn't matter Eden Prairie or you are in the moon, if we can help Ukraine and, and kind of object to the, the power play that we see in the Russia playing. So, I just want to bring it up. There's no action required.
Okay.
Just want to share my view with our council. Thank you.
No, thanks for sharing. Just a clarification on, and Mr. Getchow, keep me honest here, but the word ban is probably not exactly what we're doing. That's a, the city has decided, the city liquor stores, we're, the council's not involved in this. We could be because we have oversight, but we left it up to our manager of our liquor stores to find out what's happening with liquor distributors, other municipalities, mini liquors, and other liquor stores in general. I'm not sure total why in those, but it's pretty common that we've found across our area, region, maybe the state, that liquor stores are voluntarily pulling from their shelves for now, I, I don't know what that means exactly either, in, in support of, of the effort of what the United Nations and others, that they're pulling from their shelves, Russian products. Just to clarify for people in the audience, it's much more complicated than a name on it. Shmernov, I guess, which most people think is very Russian, is not. They sold the company to, to UK or something. There's another product, I don't, I don't drink enough of this stuff, but they sold another product, I guess, to some state, Tennessee, some company in Tennessee. Anyway, it's more complicated than just whatever, but perception is, is important. And our liquor stores, I think what Councilmember Narayan really is underscoring, that we've made, our staff has made the decision to go along with what's occurring really across the region. So, okay. Anything you want to add to that?
No, mayor, you summarized that well.
Okay. I just have a quick call-out. Many of you, we all got the message this week, the email, that Chris Wood had been promoted in the police department to captain, replacing Captain Bill Weifels. And it just reminded me of a couple of things. One is we have just an incredible group of city staff in our city. And we hear this all the time in people as we are out and about throughout the city at the grocery store, from police to fire to our, you know, engineers to public safety or public works, people that plow the roads, to our planning, planning and inspections. I mean, it just goes on and on. We just have an amazing group of staff. So, I thought I would read some of the names of, of the people that have left voluntarily over the last year and just to, and the ones, the new ones that have come on and replaced them and been promoted. So, Chris Wood promoted to police captain, replacing Bill Weifels, who retired. Tammy Wilson promoted to finance manager. And we know this and many of them, we've acknowledged in prior meetings, we just put them all on a list. Replacing Sukhachivar, who's here for years and years. Nicole Tingley, city clerk, replacing Kitty Porta, who had been here since the 90s, just phenomenal city clerk as well, cities clerk. And Nicole's been just a great replacement. Julie Clima, our very own sitting over here tonight, Community Development Director, replacing Janet Jeremiah. John Thompson, City Assessor, replacing John Sams, who had been here a long, long time. And then retiring this month, two people that have just been deeply in our lives for those of us that have been here, well, me, since the 90s, but Kevin Schmieg and Leslie Stovering. So, just the fact that people stay here their entire career just says a lot about this work environment and, and a lot about the city managers that we've hired through the years that have led this city. And we win, tell me again, we're one, the only municipal government that wins the best place to work in the long list of top 100. And we're the only city, well, I guess this year, another city got it, but not as high as we were. So, the fact that people like to work here and, and actually fill out surveys and tell the world that this is a great place to work. So, you make our world and our life and our job easier up here and you, and the staff definitely benefits our, our residents who we serve, the people of Eden Prairie. So, anything else anyone wants to comment or add to that? All right, we have something else under this, reports of council members. Mr. Getchow?
Thank you, mayor. As you may recall, because the mayor was familiar with this as well through the Municipal Legislative Commission, actually, most council members are. You've been to some recent events that we've had. We've had our legislative delegation in here to workshop. We've had an MLC meeting, which is Municipal Legislative Commission. It's made up of the largest cities in the metro area absent Minneapolis-St. Paul, cities that do not receive local government aid, that are impacted by fiscal disparities. A lot of what's happening in the upcoming state legislative session that affects many of those cities has to do with keeping local decision-making authority on housing at the local level. So, there may be bills coming, there have been bills drafted, there have been discussions that cut into some of that authority. Anything from eliminating the ability to have a planned unit development to eliminating or cutting different permit fees that are necessary to cover the cost of the service provided with an inspection or rebuilding permit. So, across the state of Minnesota, the League of Minnesota Cities has asked as many cities as possible to pass a resolution. It's a pretty simple, straightforward, non-detailed resolution in your packet that really supports housing and local decision-making authority. And it's my understanding, to date, there may be already over 100 cities in the state that have passed this or have this on their agenda. So, it's not often that we have a resolution statewide affecting municipalities. We've had it in the past, I think, in terms of supporting transportation and transit funding. I think this council's done this within the last few years. So, it's not that often we have kind of this global resolution where multiple cities are being asked to pass, but this is one of those for the upcoming legislative session. So, that's what you see on the agenda tonight.
Excellent. Council, any questions? If not, a motion?
Move to adopt a resolution supporting housing and local decision-making authority.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. We're now going to move into closed session, which doesn't, we haven't done this a lot. And so, if you're still watching this or you're going to watch this streaming throughout the week, we're going to, anytime we have a personnel issue, that's private confidentiality issues, like a review of a, of employee, we have to move into a private, off-camera session. And so, we only have one employee really that this council hires and that's our city manager. And then the city manager hires every, all other 300-some employees to go do the, the work of the city council. So, we are going back into closed session right now for our city manager annual performance review. We'll come back out here and close the public, no, I'm sorry, not public, close it, don't we close it?
Mayor, you can close it.
I have to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, you can adjourn the meeting after the closed session. You don't need to come back on here. So, the telecast will end right now, but you're going to adjourn the meeting after closed session.
Got it.
But you're not going to come back in here and do it.
Got it. Okay. So, we're saying goodbye to all of you, but the meeting will go back there and then we'll adjourn later. Got it? All right. Thank you.
Do you have, you have to make a motion?
All right, sorry, absolutely. We do need a motion.
I'll move to enter into a closed session for the purpose of conducting the city manager's review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Now, thank you.[1789.88]